All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Board work session for March 25, 2024. It is 10:00 a.m. My name is Ty Minter, Chair of the Boards. My life is Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Karina Mihia, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and we have Commissioner Gary Edwards by Zoom. We also have CPED staff, Director Josh Cummings will be joined by Inram County Manager and Assistant County Manager at some point, a little bit later in the morning. We are here. I don't have a paper agenda, so I'm going to pull up my virtual agenda. Yes, so we've got a two-hour session to review the 2024-2025 Complan and Development Code docket update. It's really a time to work through public comment and questions, concerns. And I could, Josh will probably tell us exactly what we're going to try to accomplish here this morning. And then we'll have till noon to do that. So I'm going to turn it straight to Director Cummings.
Can I just say something before we just get started? I, I just really want to thank Andrew and the rest of the staff at CPED because this has been one of the best, like most organized public comments that, you know, this is my fourth year doing, going through a docket process and just really appreciated how the comments were outlined. Appreciated the little front sheet with kind of just everything laid out. So I know this was a whole lot of work and I just want to throw my appreciation out there for just how well put together this was and how easy it was to go through.
Thank you, Commissioner Mihia. I appreciate that. And you just took bullet point number two out of my talking points here, so that's okay. So just Chair to confirm Assistant County Manager and County Manager on their way soon or?
I was told Assistant County Manager Gelder will be here in like 15 minutes and Inram County Manager Campbell, I expect any moment.
Okay. We don't need to hold for them.
No, let's just get going.
Okay, great. So thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to present this information and have this work session. I want to just start kind of high level so that we all get on the same page and aligned with where we're coming from. As you've heard, CPED's values are transparency, consistency, and accountability. And one of the main goals that we work to achieve is respect for democracy. And the way that that shows up in this is our staff, the Community Planning and Economic Development, acts as the facilitator of community conversations in regards to land use. And there can be many different perspectives on those conversations when it comes to rezones and the ways that things look in our community now and going forward into the future. And so recognizing that there may be a level of emotion in each one of these items or projects, our staff's intent is to do what we can to not engage in the emotion, but to provide all the information necessary to the Board of County Commissioners to make their decisions in terms of what is reviewed and then placed on the docket. So understanding that as we've put this together over the years, we've had different ways of trying to communicate this information. And I wanted to take a moment to again echo Commissioner Mihia's words. What you have in front of you is, I think, the most clear iteration of the concise input that we've received in a way that provides a high level and then all the way down into the details. We've been asked repeatedly, have you included all the comments on all the projects from all time? We've done what we can to get all of those to you. We have a single binder printed that is accessible. It's been up in the Board of County Commissioners' office with tons of comments. And then each one of the Commissioners received their own packet of the current comments for the docket items that we'll be reviewing. Also, I'd like to just give a little kudos. There was a conversation about should we buy new binders so they look pretty? Or should we recycle the old binders? What you have in front of you is recycled binders that have been used in the past. So working to ensure that resources are used appropriately. That's why they don't all match in case anyone's.
Unacceptable.
So your binders and your tabs are saving county tax payer money. That, I think, is my, oh, that last thing I want to say is about resources. We have essentially a three-legged stool in all of these conversations. You have the staff that's working to facilitate the community conversation. You have the planning commission, which is going to work to review and be your second lens through having the input on reviewing each one of these items before it comes to you with a recommendation. And then you have the Board of County Commissioners. And each one of those requires a public process and information in time in a day. And so when we're talking about resources, know that we've got staff resources. We have planning commission resources and we have Board of County Commissioner resources. And so when we talk about, can we just put more staff on this and maybe we could just get it done potentially? But also consider that there's other, two other areas are the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And we cannot create more hours in a day for the planning commission to review and provide recommendations. So there will be a capacity that's reached that doesn't have anything to do with staff resources. But that conversation can be had as we work through the different topic and area items. Any that, any questions? Then we'll have the staff kick it off. Commissioners?
I have a couple of questions. So that, that super fat binder represents what? Ashley?
Oh, go ahead.
Those are the comprehensive plan comments. And so what we did is we brought in all of the past comments for all of the land use and rezon amendments. And so the oldest comment in there is from 2020, and that's for the Maytown project related to the Port of Tacoma. But everything else is the Bar Holdings, Beaver Creek, and so on for the land use requests.
Prior docket comments.
Docket comments and project review.
Say it again. He had his question on hire. What does hire mean? Ashley?
I don't understand.
Prior. So the prior, prior comments that came in either on the docket or for those that are already on the docket during our preliminary project review.
You'll remember that there was a concern that prior comments weren't being reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners. That is incorrect. They are here and they are for your review. I did electronic files to all the Board of County Commissioners for prior comments received on all of the docket items as well. So the Commissioners have everything that we've received on these items. Commissioner Edwards?
As you're going over this stuff from the planning side of things, do you attempt to file, follow that guidance from the Attorney General's recommendation of September 2018 having to do with takings? Do you try to stay within those guidelines as best as you can?
As stated before, Commissioner Edwards, our job is to facilitate the community conversation. This is the input we've received and now we're providing that input to the Board of County Commissioners. In terms of policy directions, that is up to the board to follow those guidelines as you requested and have that conversation.
Well, it actually says in the memorandum from the Attorney General that it is actually written for staff in the planning circles so they make sure they don't step outside of those guidelines. I just want to make sure that we are in fact trying to adhere to those guidelines. And so apparently you haven't even seen that Attorney General's guidance from September of 2018.
Go for it.
Commissioner Edwards County has seen that document when it was produced a number of years ago. And as you requested, I have scheduled for Travis to come in and advise the board regarding that document, and that's going to be happening in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
My other question was channeling Commissioner Edwards for a moment about, like some of the public comment that we got were legal arguments that I would have questions about. I don't see anyone, I don't see Travis or someone here. So I guess I'm trying to figure out how do we navigate those pieces of public comment? Are we gonna, what are we trying to finish today versus maybe a follow-up session where we have council present? Because like a lot of the stuff in the future wise letter, I simply don't understand the lammers. Like we've never even talked about lammers or, or anything and the rural, you know, the, the claim that all, a lot of the rezones are illegal based on advocating for urban development within rural areas. There's some nuances to the UGA swap that we've never used before that I really have questions for council about. So I don't know how that fits into what, how far are we trying to get today? And how would legal advice play into that process? Go for it, Ashley.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that as we, as we presented the UGA swap, it is a brand-new piece of legislation. And so if that were added to the docket, we'd be working closely with legal council to navigate that new legislation. We have not engaged them at this point since it, it isn't on the docket. So those staff resources haven't been extended in terms of the future wise letter. Those are also questions that would be explored if something got placed on the docket. But that, that analysis hasn't been completed yet.
And so again, this is the us bringing the input we received from the community conversation to you, the Board of County Commissioners.
We can ask you to follow up.
Exactly. So then you put those questions in and if you decide that that's a priority or if you need more information, we can get that for you.
And terminology-wise, like when you say add to the, like we have a docket. I mean, do we wipe the docket clean and we're starting all over? Is that the idea? Because Bar Holdings was on the docket and so was Beaver Creek and so was Wilmowski. And so was, so now they're not on the docket until we put them back on the docket? Is that how we're talking about this?
Yep.
Just making sure because the, because the, like the sheets just said add, hold, or remove. It didn't say retain. This is how I was thinking about it.
Totally. And so if you were, I know having these briefings and sections can sometimes it's hard to carry and follow the bouncing ball. But if you recall the previous briefing that we had, that we're on a two-year docketing cycle. We're now at the beginning of that refresh. And so it can, it's terminology, but in terms of formal, we are the, hitting the beginning of the first year of the two-year cycle. And so up to the Commissioners on how the items that were on their previous can come back on again. But yes, in terms of the formal discussion, this is a reset of the docket cycle, two years.
Okay. Other preliminary questions from anyone before we turn it over to CPED staff? Okay.
Okay, go for it.
Go ahead and share my screen.
Good morning Commissioners. Andrew Ballin, Community Planning. I'm joined by Ashley Arroyo, Community Planning Manager, and Anna Rodriguez, an Associate Planner within our Growth Management Services. Today's presentation is on the comprehensive plan and development code docket updates. These will be kind of going through the comments that we've received as well as seeking general direction on how we should move forward with those projects. Part of the outreach that we did for this present, for this comment period was pretty extensive. We looked at utilizing a new tool, Survey Monkey, to expand our comment outreach. It actually was widely successful and we did receive around 1,300 comments. And we did follow our standard noticing through press release, legal ad, and so on. And for all the viewers listening in, we are, these materials can be found on the Board of County Commissioners webpage under the Agenda item. So during today's briefing, we're hoping to go through the overall process and timeline that we have so far, an overview of the docket comments, a direction from the board on how to move forward with those projects, and then next steps. So today we are at just kind of a decision point from the board, just seeking it. Do we want to add the project? Do we want to place it on hold or do we want to remove further consideration? And so like I said, this will be adding it to the two-year docket, starting with 2024 to 2025. As Josh has mentioned, it is a reset year and so we are kind of rebuilding the docket from scratch. And so how I'd like, how I imagine this process to go, we will go project by project. And I will kind of give an overview of what we received from the community. And then following that overview and questions, seek a general direction from the.
Hold on one second, sorry. Is there an audio visual problem?
I think he's on mute. Andrew.
So that is the, he's signed in so he can do the presentation and the microphone is for the room.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
Get a general direction of thumbs up. We want to move it forward to the docket, maybe sideways if we want to put it on hold. And then a thumbs down if we want to add it. And this is going to just be a preliminary review of each project. And then we'll circle back at the end and kind of go through each of the kind of initial thoughts with the board to hopefully narrow down the scope of the docket. So to start out, just going to dive right in, the Shoreline Master Program, this is going to be the final action of the Shoreline Master Program. We are in the process of forwarding the draft to ecology and hopefully we'll hear back in the next year or so. It has a pretty high staff resource need and a high public interest. We only received about two comments and they were both in support, looking to get this project completed. Kind of spitting along. Is there any ideas, thoughts, feelings on this?
So you're looking for the thumbs up to keep, keep going?
Thumbs up to, we're going to throw, sorry, I'm citing right now on things.
So this is, I think what we're doing is, this is an easy one. We know that Shoreline Master Program is near the end. So Andrew's starting off with something that's kind of a gimme. Do you want to keep us, keep Shoreline Master Program on the docket because we're almost done? Thumbs up, keep moving on it. And I think that's what we're trying to accomplish.
And then we have a visualization so that you can actually see, I'm sorry, I'm a little jittery with my old meds. The kind of like what each project is going to do impacting staff-wise. And so that there's a visualization related to staffing needs.
So, so let's also throw into this mix that the board needs to see what the whole picture looks like. So as you go and you say, oh yeah, add that or take that out, that doesn't mean that you cannot change it once you see how many staff are consumed and there's still something else out there. This is not final decision by any stretch of the imagination.
Exactly. Can we just finish that though and then go back and then give thumbs up?
Yes.
Once, rather than trying to do it as we go.
Instead of item by item, put up the staff recommendation.
Just go through all the items.
Awesome. Any questions on the Shoreline Master Program?
Can I do a question?
Yeah.
My question is in regards to, we're kind of like in ecology's timeline right now with this, right? So dependent on when it comes back, basically our priority will kind of mean squat because we're dependent on another agency's timeline on the Shoreline Master. So it can be.
This in the prioritization, is that what you're?
Yeah.
And so we'll, so again.
I'm jumping ahead, I know, but just, just in my head, I'm just wondering, just because this one is, is not dependent on us and our staff or any of our resources. It's dependent on another agency's.
That's correct.
And, and us just being ready to pick it up and carry it through that final action when it does finally come back.
So it needs to be on the docket for us to pick it up and carry it when it comes back. So after we go through these, staff's recommendation would be like, this is a gimme. It should be on there so that we're prepared when it comes back to us.
The pri, the prioritization in that case might not be as important because that's going to be driven by when it comes back from ecology. So kind of random when you throw it into your prioritization list, but probably should be.
And the intent is for the next meeting to be about prioritization because that can get pretty sticky as well. Okay. So I just wanted to get that, all these out of the.
So the intent of our next meeting is to assign priorities?
Yep. And that, so we'll come back, we'll come back with some questions. If you have questions on the items that you've decided to have on there, some of those legal questions, other items, staff resources. We'll do what we can preliminarily today, but then we'll do more analysis when you decide what items you do or do not want on the docket. And that's when the prioritization happens at the next meeting. But obviously, I mean, it's human nature. You're going to want to have that conversation as well at any time. So we're going to run through them. I think leaving that list up there is great and then just kind of tick through them and come back. So don't spend too much time.
Moving on to the next one, this is going to be the Olympia UGA joint code. This is going to be an update to a title within Thurston County code. It will be a pretty high staff lift but a low public interest. And we did receive three public comments on the proposal. One from the city of Olympia, supporting this code amendment. And the comments were generally in support of this update.
And I'll just point out with all the joint codes, they're kind of wrapped into our comprehensive plan update as they relate to housing. The expectation from the Department of Commerce is when we bring our housing element updates through in the next two years that all of the joint code updates and joint plan policies will follow along with that. So there is a tie-in with Thurston 2045.
And as a reminder to the board, this is the next step. So you approved the joint plans last docket cycle. And this is implementing those visions into the codes, having a conversation about the nuts and bolts of actually within those UGAs, how does permit and planning work? And so again, our recommendation would be, this is what the board has had as a priority. This goes back to some of our conversations with the city of Lacey and the permit confusion process. And this would help to clear that up as we've committed, the board committed to the city of Lacey. So staff's recommendation would be, put this on the docket as part of the next step of the process.
So there's a joint plan update versus joint code update?
So the plan is first, you agree on the vision, and then the code is that it's in bolts. You have to decide where you want to go before you.
No, no, I get it. I mean, I get it now, but like that, I'm just like the word, that's helpful to have two different words.
Totally.
Because I kept thinking, when does the code part come?
Here we are.
Part of the plan, but it's called the code update.
Yep, good, perfect. Thank you.
Moving on to the Tomwater UGA code update. We had four comments, very similar to the city of Olympia and overall opinion. And then we also did receive a letter from the city of Tomwater supporting this update.
Is that forest lands you said?
This is Tomwater UGA.
Oh, I'm seeing, okay.
Commissioner Mance is ready to go.
Well, I, I was just looking at those code things together.
And then same with Lacey, we didn't receive a comment from the city, but we did receive one comment in support of the overall proposal and its similar in staff resource need and public interest from the other two. Forest land conversions, we did receive four public comment, mostly in support of the proposal. It is kind of at the tail end and so the staff resource need will be low if it is added to the docket and finalized. Moving on to the transfer of development rights and purchase of development rights. We had five responses received. They were kind of across the board and overall opinion, the positive and kind of neutral. It will be a pretty high staff resource need and a high public interest.
Yeah, the, a lot of that staff resource need will be paying for professional consultant services. So this one is tied to a grant that we received from the EPA.
Moving on, the review of CIPA comment period. This will be a low staff resource need and a medium public interest. We had one public comment and it was pretty neutral in their opinion of the project.
Can I go back real quick? So TDR, that seems important that we've received a grant. So if we don't place this on our docket, we don't, we, we send the money back?
We don't get to work on those pieces of it. There are other pieces that don't necessarily include the, the code updates, but to update the actual code pieces, which is an integral piece, it would need to be on the docket.
How big is this grant?
$386,000 over the next two and a half, three years.
But the cons are that it's staff intensive and we're not sure that our county is at the size where this type of program would really grow legs and benefit us at this point. So is it like preliminary for future planning? Or I mean, because I've, I've heard that we're really not of the size where this would have much benefit to us yet.
So there's two pieces. There's the transfer development rights program. And there has been a lot of conversation about how do you make that, how do you make that work for a county like Thurston County? There's also the purchase development rights program. And so that is a piece where if the board finds. And so that is a piece where if the board finds a particular funding stream or whatnot, you know, code updates would be needed to actually make that be a more effective program. But all in all, these are small pieces of a much bigger look at the land conservation incentive programs that the county has. And so without that code piece, you might not be able to implement all the changes that are identified through the project, the grant project.
Is this needed to dovetail with the agricultural, you know, the long-term ag piece? Because I know it's been talked about, like, oh, we need to purchase these rights if we're going to put certain parcels in the long-term ag road. We need to, I don't know, there's various ways this has touched on that.
Yep, it, it is. It's one of the important pieces that the stakeholders that we engage with over the year and a half that we've been doing the LTA zone, said that the county needs to identify updates to land conservation incentive programs.
Ashley, what are LTA zones?
A long-term agriculture zoning designation. And if it expands, having, having those conservation programs in place to potentially compensate for the protection of our land.
So yes, they are connected.
And that was the most, or the more controversial segment as you looked at that particular code last year.
Yep. And that was why we actually applied for the grant, was that stakeholder feedback that we got really early on, saying that this was a critical piece.
Yeah, so those are important connections to make. Because if we're going to have another decision to make on the ag piece and moving them forward without kind of seeing the connections is, or not moving them forward, if there is a connection, it's not. Good.
Okay, moving on to the permit review process annual update. This is a new docket item. It is intended, it's foreseen to be a low staff resource and a low public interest. And we had one comment in support of this code project.
And thi- this is really an opportunity to try to, oh, reduce the amount of resources that go into efficiencies that might be identified from our development services staff. So instead of doing, you know, maybe three separate projects related to permit review processes, trying to bundle them up together and be more responsive to that feedback that we're hearing from development services that they hear from our customers.
So this is just like a placeholder for what, it's not anything specific that we're, you're trying to accomplish?
Correct. But as things are identified through just permit review, it allows us the flexibility to respond to them more rapidly than returning in another docket cycle and requesting a new docket item.
So remember, the CPED is broken into two main divisions. The community planning is thinking about the rules. And the development services team is thinking about how to implement those rules. And so if the development services team sees that a rule could be changed that could benefit the applicants, they need this placeholder to have the community planning have the ability to help change that rule.
And like, we also had one once, didn't we, from the hearing examiner? Does that, that fall into this bucket? If she says, I've seen a lot of instances of this piece of code is hard to implement. I think we should look at it. And then we plug it in here?
Yep. Moving on to the less restrictive alternative community housing code update. This is related to the Department of Corrections. This will have a pretty high staff resource need and a high public interest. There were four public comments received, but they weren't necessarily aware of what this actually means and what it's related to. Off the wall, but it is related to the Tonino project that was last year. Moving on to the new uses and related standards. This is similar to the permit review annual update. This will allow us to respond to new uses and related standards. So for example, the Smokehouse project, this would fall under that from a couple of years ago. There were three public comments received and most, if not all, were in support. Moving on to the code clarifications and corrections. This is similar to the last two. This is an annual update that allows us to respond. Last year, this was changing our name throughout the code. And so this small little changes throughout the code that allow us to respond more rapidly. Low staff need and a low public interest. And we had two comments in support of the proposal.
I'm sorry, I, can you go back to new uses? I wasn't quite there yet. What is that about?
So that's going to be similar to the permit review annual update, but this is going to be specific to new uses and their related standards. So if you think back three years ago when we did the Smokehouse code update, that use never existed in our code. And that would allow us to incorporate new standards in our code that respond to new uses that had, didn't really exist when the code was originally written.
And so one, we know that we've gotten touch through inquiries on in the last year, like mobile food trucks. Really popular, don't really have that use clearly identified. And so when an applicant comes in with a permit, it's hard to figure out, is it permitted? Is it not permitted? What standard should apply? And so this would allow us to be able to respond to those emerging uses that, that folks want to implement.
Think of them as buckets. So the first one that we talked about was permit review process annual update. That's for rules that we already have. That's that bucket. The new uses would be, let's, we need a new bucket. Because we don't have these uses, so let's have that new uses area. As opposed to changing a rule, this would be creating a rule. That could be helpful.
Turning back to the code clarifications and corrections. We had two public comments received, both in support of the proposal. Moving on to the natural landmark program. We had four comments received. They were generally neutral and/or against to, against the proposal. It would have a medium staff resource need and a low public interest if it were to move forward.
And this is the one where we have had legal counsel and they have identified a number of concerns with the county establishing a new program for conservation that sort of goes, goes outside of existing programs that, you know, land trust and whatnot have set up.
Moving on to the cannabis-related code amendments. This would have a pretty high staff resource need and a high public interest. We had 10 comments received. Most were in support with some just kind of neutral towards the topic.
And the planning commission did recommend that this item be docketed. It came up in the context of, sorry, the long-term agriculture zoning update. And that cannabis isn't necessarily recognized as an agricultural product.
Moving on to the no shooting zone. This is going to be a non-GMA project. This will have a pretty high staff resource need and a low, a medium public interest. We had 11, 11 responses received, kind of all across the board, in support, against, or just generally stating they don't prefer shooting.
I would just say that the last time the county attempted to approach the no shooting zone, it received high public interest. It was not low.
And so these last two, just, and we've talked about this before, but it's helpful to engage again. These are not land use issues. These are outside of our code. But the Board of County Commissioners asked that we put these into this list because what we do is run a public process. And so the board at the time wasn't sure where to put these. So they gave them to us to continue to have the conversation that they're hearing from the community. And so that's why you see these, they're not GMA related. But that's what, since we do a public process, we have the planning commission. It's up to the board to decide if you'd like to address these going forward in process.
That was going to be my question, was like, why are these even here right now? Because they're not part of the GMA, not within the scope. And then, yeah, medium public interest for these two, I think, is absolutely incorrect.
At this point...
As soon as it moves forward.
Exactly.
The, just because Commissioner Klaus and Commissioner Fornier weren't here, this has been percolating around since I first joined the board. And it was because of Black Lake. Citizens on, there's, there's duck hunting that happens. And people, people were, my constituents were coming to me with videos where they were like standing on their dock. And they were, there were shooting happening like right in front of their properties. Like, it's kind of a free-for-all in terms of the hunting rules on Black Lake. And the people that do jet skiing and boating and swimming, and there's kids, and there's Columbus Park. And they wanted us to look at this. So we didn't quite know what to do about it or what to do with it. So Josh said it probably needs to be a docket item that's looked at comprehensively. I tried to engage fish, because, because one of the videos that was shown to me was where a constituent called Washington Fish, Department of Fish and Wildlife. And their game officer came out and they, because they were trying to see, because they would be the ones to enforce the rules that exist. It's not county code. I don't know, it was, this is several years ago, I don't remember the details. But she basically videoed a conversation that she had with the Washington Fish and Wildlife Officer, who was basically like, not much we can do here. And the people were like sneaking, I mean, it was a whole thing. And it was really about Black Lake. And it was about, and, and I saw videos of people shooting like really, really close to people's docks and, and where human beings were standing. So it looked like something we should at least sort of talk about. But we couldn't find the right avenue to talk about it. So this is where it landed. And then every year, it's, and every year, the last couple of years, it's been just kind of held on the preliminary docket. So nothing's been, hasn't gone forward, but it, something that we've said, at some point, we probably want to deal with this, but we haven't had the staff resources to move it forward. So that's kind of the context of how this came to be. It was me working with a constituent on Black Lake and me trying to help her find an outlet for her concerns. And this is just what it is.
And prior to that, a few years prior to that...
I remember that.
Mr. Venezuela.
I, I, just as a random point, I, if you were jet skiing during duck season, you'd be pretty cold. And it's not, not typical. So I mean, like, there, there are things that exist that kind of separate these uses. But, you know, like, I don't live on Black Lake, so I, I don't understand those issues. But I have lived in duck hunting world my entire life. And sometimes you do get BBs landing on your roof.
If I remember correctly, the person that was, that was coming to us was a professional jet skier who trained the entire year and moved to Black Lake for that purpose from a different lake where...
Very special, unique person that has one interest in that lake. When you share a lake with lots of people, you got to take all those things into consideration.
More people came forward though, so.
A duck hunter in Tonino would be upset if jet skiers were on Scatter Creek. So I get it.
And so just to clarify also, we didn't ask for these items, but we do have the process and we can accept them. They are both in Chapter 10, which is the public safety chapter of the code. So we believe that both of these, we would need to, it would be helpful to engage those connected to public safety in the county organization.
Same for fireworks. Probably a high interest if that's the case. And a medium staff resource need. There was 46 responses to that one. Most in support of some type of change and/or enforcement to fireworks. So it was kind of across the board with a few that were against any sort of changes to the existing regulations.
Yeah. The tough thing is enforcement is nearly impossible unless you employ every law enforcement officer in the entire county on 4th of July to go out and, you know, enforce things. And then I would want to sift through the comments from Olympia residents and Lacey residents and other city residents where it's already banned from county residents. You know? Some of the ones that I read, they're like, there was one that was like, oh, in Olympia, we've had a ban for years. And this is what we like. And I'm like, okay, well, that's different than people that live in the county that go crazy with fireworks, which, you know.
And we can give you a zip code breakdown if that would be helpful.
Thank you.
For this one, it's also, I think the conversation commissioners have had in the past is that many of the fireworks cells do take place on reservation lands. And so we can't, we can't ban the cell of fireworks on, on the reservation. And so that was, I think, another piece of the conversation that we had when we were considering this beforehand.
Shifting over to the comprehensive plan docket. We'll start out with the capital improvement program. This is just the CIP. This is a reoccurring docket item. Beginning to see it in July this year. It is a low staff need and a low public interest. And there were about 14 responses. The comments kind of were all over the board with just their overall sentiment. And a lot of it related to just different development standards. Moving on to the ag policy and program review. This will have a pretty high staff resource need and a high public interest. We had about 24 responses received. And they were kind of across the board, but generally in support of ag. And we did receive two comments, one from Futurewise recommending that we complete this project this year. And the Clean Black Lake Alliance, which is in support of farmland.
And this is the one that is tied to the long-term agriculture zoning update, which is responding to an appeal. So we are still moving, or under that appeal. This one should be placed on the, on the docket so we can complete, complete that project.
Can I ask, I mean, we had a couple of briefings, I want to say, early fall about stony soils and irrigatable if drained and wetland irrigate, whatever those words are. But, and then we haven't heard about this for like six months. Like, what's going on with this?
Yeah, we did not have a GIS specialist to follow through and update the maps per the board's direction. We, we now have one as of January. They're working through a few other priorities, but they did start work on this. And we're hoping to be able to bring it back to the board within the next month or two and have those updated maps that reflect the, at least the preliminary direction we received prior to moving to hearing.
So is this almost done then?
It's, it's close, yeah. So it's in the board's, board's realm at this point. We'll probably do, even though the, this is before you came on board. But yeah, the next step was going to be a public hearing. But I think to make sure everyone is caught up to speed, we'll, we'll start with briefings again and revisit if a public hearing is appropriate.
Thank you. And Commissioner Minter, you're correct. That's where we left it in our last briefing in fall, was that pending staff resources in the IT department for this GIS analyst, we didn't have the capability to bring back what the board had asked. And, and now we do. So we will.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, with, with two commissioners and, I mean, I kind of had a handle on it six months ago. And now I, it's a little fuzzy again, so we'll need to kind of go back and...
We'll hit the refresh.
Moving on to the Nisqually subarea plan. This is an update to the subarea plan. This would have a pretty high staff resource need and a high public interest. We just had an open house this past January, which was well-intended. We received 14 responses to the survey. They were across the board, but generally in support of the Nisqually subarea with some comments on just what should happen in the Nisqually.
I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in and just give a little shine here to the staff. It was an amazing event in Nisqually, great turnout, really creatively well done. We've heard from the community that going to the places where these items are happening and really engaging with them is effective. And so we'll continue to put these on your calendar. But if you have the opportunity to be at these outreach events, they're impactful. Ensuring that we get as much information from the community that's being affected as possible to bring back to you. So well done, staff, and being creative in how we...
Are we able to ask any questions or any comments at some point?
No, sir. Not, this is a boardwork session. We're not taking any public comment.
Oh, okay.
Moving on to Thurston 2045. This is our periodic update to our comprehensive plan. This has a pretty high staff resource need and a high public interest. And we had around 33 comments on the proposal, and they were across the board. We did receive two comments from two nonprofits. Both the Clean, Clean Black Lake Alliance and Restoring Earth Connection believes this is a high priority and believe that the climate mitigation plan should be incorporated into it.
And the, and this work is also supported by two Department of Commerce grants, one for the climate element and one for the general periodic.
It has to be included. So the comment that it should be included is irrelevant because it's included, right?
We believe that it should include it. Did you have a question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm wondering, are any of the projects that we're going to be reviewing tied to Thurston 2045 or have to be done while we do Thurston 2045?
The pieces of the joint code, the housing pieces of the joint code are tied. But the joint code update would go beyond housing. Our intention would be to fully implement the joint plans that were adopted.
This is the, the big work of the year, as you commissioners are aware. And this is where our process at Thurston County is slightly different than the other jurisdictions. When they are in a comprehensive plan docket year, comprehensive plan item year, they do not accept specific land use rezones so that the staff can focus on the docket comprehensive plan item. We at Thurston County currently provide a customer service decision to continue to... to continue to accept specific site-specific land rezone uses, but it does, I think, impact expectations, because this is something that we have to do per the state. And we have received grants, as Ashley said, Ashley, will you relay the amount of grants for those?
Yeah, so we have a $700,000 Department of Commerce grant for the general periodic update, and a $300,000 grant for the climate element.
And so when we do the exercise on the resources for staff, this one will obviously be a big one.
So on Commissioner Mihia's question, I, I thought I understood that if we were to work on this UGA land swap, it also has to be included in the comp plan update to be able to go forward under the new legislation. That's what I was told, at least.
So, yeah, they, more updated legislation was just passed that allows it to be pulled into an annual update outside of a comprehensive plan update.
It's like they're encouraging this kind of action, like they're lowering the bar.
Creating efficiency. Bullets that you saw that it would be difficult to implement in a quicker pace, so they tweaked it and added that opportunity to move faster.
Well, I just, it just felt weird. It's like they would, to, to have a rule like that and basically say, if you want to do this, you have to, you know, like, you have to jam it into this thing that only happens every, what, ten years or eight years?
But you could open it and you can make changes to your comp plan, like, once a year.
Not, but, 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 but under the previous iteration, that could not happen for a UGA land swap.
That'd be in the periodic.
Now, now she's saying we can, but apparently before this, they said, nope, it's got to be in part of your reg. So not only would you have to say you want to do it, but you, but they'd be dictating to you when you'd do it. You would, it'd be really, it'd seem like an unnecessary limitation of county flexibility on its. But I guess it's about the whole evaluation of, because UGAs are kind of tied to the whole overarching scheme of, I don't know, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what the rationale was, but.
Yep, the intent, we're, we have not tried to dive deeply into the previous intent, but now we know that we can move forward.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I have a question on that. I've just heard back and forth on that point, which is kind of a key point in my decision process on the bar holding swap. Are we a hundred percent sure that that's the case, and it's not something that has to be updated just during the ten-year update? Like, we have, like, attorney confirmation on that?
So the legislation was just updated, we can, we can see counsel, but the intention of the update was to have it be something that could be done on an annual basis, rather than just as part of the periodic review.
And that's our reading, but we can definitely engage with legal counsel.
Okay, that'd be great.
Regardless, this is now time for the periodic review, so the previous legislation, even if that's what was going forward, we'd still be good, right?
If it was, yeah, I mean, it would have to, it would have had to have been very highly prioritized in order to, to get.
Get it shoehorned in there?
Shoehorned in there and on the track with what we're trying to, the timeline we're trying to meet for the comp plan. This was kind of where I was a little bit getting across.
Which is completed in six years.
Well, our deadline's end of 2025.
December 2025.
I make it.
Moving on, the Tenino UGA analysis, this was an add-in by Commissioner Fournier. This would have a low staff resource need and a low public interest. We anticipate, there were about twenty-five responses, I think it was because of how vague we wrote it, because we weren't really sure of the direction we were going to go with it. There was a lot of uncertainty as to what it actually meant, so the comments were kind of across the board.
And, and I would say to your question, Commissioner Mihia, about things pulled into Thurston 2045, this one could either be pulled into Thurston 2045, depending on the scope, or it could stand alone as a Tenino joint plan update. So there is some flexibility there, and it would take probably another conversation with the board around how, how you want to see that scoped.
And just to further clarify, this would just be an analysis. Any sort of actual action that takes place following the analysis would be docketed and be its own distinct project as well. Okay, moving on to the BLQ Womoski Grand Mound West Land Use and Rezone Amendment. This is anticipated to have a pretty high staff resource need to finish up, as well as public interest. We had around fifty comments received, and most were in support of that with some not so much in support.
Where are we in that? Like, there's been previous binders where you kind of had the little bar graph of like how far along it is. Aren't we like, almost done?
This one is in environmental review and then board process.
So yes, I mean, a lot's gone behind it. It's not like this is a new proposal.
So it'd be at least, at least halfway done.
Is Womoski or something, it was like eleven years old or something?
Yeah, in terms of the public process, it's more than halfway done.
For the next couple of ones, can we get like an update on where they're at in the process? Because I know some of the items have already been added, and so if they've been started on, I think the board, I, I would like to know where they are.
This goes back to Commissioner Minster's original question on, do we wipe it all clean, or do we take some of the stuff that was there before and keep working on it? So I think that's helpful.
Right, because you can, I mean, tech, I mean, even the, even if technically we're wiping it clean and replacing, it weighs heavily on me if we're three-fourths of the way through the work on something. Even if it's looking a little dicey, let's just finish the work and get the process complete.
Yeah, let me just provide a little background then on the Grand Mound pieces. So we, we had worked with the board to update the Grand Mound subarea plan last year, and we wrapped into that all of the rezone requests that were within the UGA. If you remember, the ones that were outside the UGA, we sort of said, we can, we can look at those in a later phase, and we were working with TRPC to put together that Urban Growth Management Subcommittee meeting late last year. So that Urban Growth Management Subcommittee meeting, they looked at three of the, those proposals, one that were outside the UGA. You have Daskin, Womoski, Black Lake Quarry, two of them, the Black Lake Quarry and Womoski reserve, received a recommendation to move forward, a recommendation for approval. Those are also both located fairly close to each other in West Grand Mound. So as we were looking at that next step of environmental review, thought that we could package those two and move them forward faster through an environmental review and get those to the board this year.
Sorry, and just as the board may recall, this was in honor of the board's conversation on that, was to put them together and have those two move together for the speed, because they had the support of the Urban Growth Management Group, which is made up of other jurisdictions, everybody weighing in on how those work with that area. So just making sure that that piece is clicking, that the board asked for these to be bundled together, and they are, and they can move forward quickly together.
So we are currently working on that environmental review and hope to get to the board here within the next few months on those. There are two proposals on the east side of Grand Mound that don't have as clear of a pathway. They have gone through planning commission, in the case of Daskin, they went through planning commission. UGM Subcommittee did not recommend approval of that one. However, Daskin's application that's currently being considered for docketing is slightly different than what the UGM Subcommittee saw. The applicant did try to make some adjustments to respond to concerns that he heard from the UGM Subcommittee. But in terms of identifying a path for environmental review, or whether it would go back to the UGM Subcommittee, those things have not been determined yet. There is one final one, and that's Jackson, which you also see listed here. That is not an expansion of the UGA, so it doesn't require UGM Subcommittee review, but an environmental review pathway hasn't been clearly identified. It has gone through planning commission. If it was docketed, we would further explore, you know, environmental review, issue a CEPA checklist, and, and then the board would be the next step for that.
Would the planning commission have a recommendation?
They, they recommended not approving the Jackson proposal.
So, okay.
I just want to point out that I've never heard anyone refer to anything east of I-5 as Grand Mound. In my mind, Grand Mound only exists on the west side of I-5.
There's a little bit, yeah, for east of I-5.
Is there a UGA though, like, east of I-5?
There is a little bit, not a lot.
And, so, you're gonna, we're, we're, we're on the list, Jackson and Daskin are next. Are you going to explain to us the, the modifications to the Daskin's proposal? Because I did not catch that from what I saw at the UGM Subcommittee.
Yeah, I, I can, I can touch on that. So the, with Daskin in particular, the, the proposal was initially to bring a full, I want to say it's an eighty to a hundred acre parcel into the UGA. But that parcel has a number of environmentally sensitive areas on it, and that was a concern of the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee, why would you bring something into the UGA if it can't be fully developed? The proposal at this point is to shrink the amount of acreage that would be brought into the UGA to that part of the parcel that could be developed, and then setting aside the, the rest of it for potential conservation or just not being developed as part of a urban growth area expansion.
Do they have the fore and after map?
They should have the proposed proposal.
I see it, it's red, there's red and yellow, and I'm assuming the yellow is the original, and the red is the scaled back proposal on a page.
Another concern that the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee identified with this proposal, just so you're aware, that doesn't, that is not reflected into the, the application at this point, is it was outside the service area for the sewer and water master plants for Grand Mound. So there isn't a clear path for water and sewer service at this time. But that is also something that we can continue working with Public Works on if the board wanted to docket it.
Jumping into Jackson.
Hold on, you see, water service would be easy, but wastewater would not, I would imagine.
They're just outside the current assumptions for both of those plans. And so it would just take conversations with Public Works, and even if we got through the hurdles of the plan, there's also the expense of extending them to an area that they hadn't planned on.
And so Planning Commission hasn't seen the update yet.
They have not seen the update, and so we would have to potentially go back, planning commission, Urban Growth Management Subcommittee.
But even the, the shrunk new area still has the same concern of the no access to sewer.
Yep.
And what was the recommendation from the Planning Commission?
Denial, and UGM Subcommittee did not recommend approval.
But with this new information, oh, are we still talking about Daskin's?
Yeah.
And this is with the new information that's been, or with the previous?
It was the previous.
Previous, and so they had two, two concerns, and Commissioner Minster can jump in since he served on that, but I think one of them was environmentally sensitive areas, and the other one was water sewer access.
So the new proposal addresses the sensitive areas, it shrinks the area, but it doesn't get to the water and sewer access?
I, I, I mean, it actually went beyond that, in my opinion. Those were kind of like the extra pieces. There was a fundamental thing about all four of them. You have to meet the threshold criteria that there's insufficient land within the concurrent UGA. Now with the west ones, Womoski and Black Lake, we had the industrial land study, and we had the, the housing numbers that showed that there was a need for land zoned for, for the lower income, for multifamily housing, and there was a, a need for, given the land uses for the industrial within Grand Mound, those two, actually, there was an argument there. And that fundamental threshold argument just didn't seem to be there for Jackson or Daskin's. I mean, in terms of how do you get, I mean, I know Jackson's not a UGA, so Daskin's was the one where it's like, how do you make the argument? You know, it just, it was kind of icing on the cake, so to speak, that, that so much of it was like undevelopable anyway. Why would you put a bunch of undevelopable land into the UGA? But even scaled back, the same, the same question still remains, how do you meet that threshold requirement?
So as Ashley just relayed, that is helpful perspective from my UGM, the Urban Growth Management, that you served on that. Thank you for that input, and I think that you captured the concern of the UGM as well.
Yes, just for process clarification in my head, so were this to be added to the docket, would it have to go back to the UGM? Is that where you said you were not clear?
I, I would want to do a check-in with TRPC. This is kind of an, it'd be new ground for us to cover when an application gets significantly modified, whether you want to bring it back through the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee.
I think that'd be most appropriate, especially since it was denied previously or not recommended, excuse me. If the board would like to consider, we'd like to follow all proper process.
Having just toured the Grand Mound utilities, the wastewater would be near them, it would never get there. It would be, it just, it's not going to, going under I-5 with, you know, wastewater treatment pipes and things like that, I can't imagine anybody's going to cough up money for, for that piece of property. But, I mean, water, our, our water towers are right there, so water would be easy, but wastewater would never, never get there.
Good. So the Jackson, Grand Mound East, had around twenty public comments. Most were not in favor of the proposal, with a few that were, and or had general sentiments that were neutral. We did receive one comment from a nonprofit, the Clean Black Lake Alliance, which opposed the rezone to RRI.
I know it's, just, I think it's important, our job as facilitators of the communication is to provide you the pure numbers of the comments that we received. So the value of each of those comments is, that's up to the Board of Accounting Commissioners to ensure that you dive deeply into what you've got.
Daskin's received route 21 public comment. Again, they were mostly against the proposal, with some just generally neutral on the, the topic.
And the Jackson property, is that where they're trying to put in like a dentist office or something? Is that the?
No, at least in my, my conversations with the applicant, they currently operate a business, like, doing steel fabrication, and they mostly do off-site work. But they're being asked to do a lot more customized work, and they were hoping to be able to do that customized work on their current property, rather than having to lease space elsewhere.
And they can't now because?
Zoning doesn't allow it. I think he, the hope was to, you know, have a full-on shop where multiple employees can come and work. He, Jackson, at least the applicant has stressed that water and sewer would not be required for that operation. They understand that this is a rural resource industrial zone that, you know, does not have water sewer access in the long term.
And this is something that they're kind of doing already on the site to some extent?
Off-site, so they mostly do steel fabrication, you know, where they actually go to someone else's property and build, build steel buildings, and, but they're building up this custom, custom line as well to respond to all these requests.
The dentist office thing, he, too, that was within the UGA, right? And we approved that one.
Moving on to the.
He's still mad at us.
Oh, really? Bar Holdings UGA swap land use and then the rezone, this was the winner on the number of comments. We had six hundred and ninety-eight responses. This would be a pretty, a pretty high staff resource need and public interest. The comments were kind of across the board with about forty-seven percent leaning towards in favor, as well as around thirty-seven percent kind of opposed to the idea. We did receive quite a few comments from both nonprofit and government agencies, either in support or against the proposal. And obviously, a lot of public comments to go along with that. Questions on that one?
Yes, so this was on the docket before. Where does it stand in terms of work that's been done? And I know that it's been.
So it was a different proposal that was on the docket. The UGA swap, since it's so new, the current application didn't reflect that. Once the applicant decided that they wanted to put in an application for a UGA swap, most of our work with them has been around what the process for that would look like. Being able to answer their questions as well, the board's questions. But no public process at this time.
Okay, so can you answer one of my other questions, which was about, does it have to be connected to the comp plan? Sounds like it doesn't necessarily. I have a question about the UGA swap, because I only, you know, I don't read, you know, that was like pretty new law, right? And I didn't really read it in turn, until I got to preparing for this. And I thought it was just a flexible tool for, you know, as you throw out a UGA, and it doesn't quite fit where the development's going to happen, so it gives, I, I thought it was going to give jurisdictions just flexibility to just mold that, as long as it was a net zero, you know, expansion. But the way the law reads, it's quite a bit more restrictive than that, and it's, you have to have a threshold showing that there's that in the specific. And it's, you have to have a threshold showing that there's, in the specific place that you're gonna expand the UGA, that there's a pattern of development that's creating pressure that doesn't, isn't allowed. And I'm just wondering how this proposal gets through that bar? And that's a probably question for legal counsel?
I would say that those aren't defined yet.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, if it's one of the first UGA swaps and it isn't clearly defined in state law, it's something that the board will have to, board will have to help inform.
And that's the analysis of what happened if you chose to put it on the docket? And we would go with the applicant and ask how they're meeting the intent of the law? And bring that information back to Board of County Commissioners. That'd be part of the public process.
So we may have to decide to put on the docket, not knowing how that legal piece is gonna play out?
Has there ever been a UGA swap on this legislation yet?
No.
So we would be building it.
Groundbreaking.
Yeah.
That's what we do.
Can you remind us like what the purpose of a UGA is?
Sure. Go for it, Ashley.
Yeah, it's essentially identifying where urban growth will be accommodated outside of an existing city limits. And the intention of creating a UGA is that you have that defined area for urban growth. And therefore, you're better to conserve rural lands outside of that area. So cities can plan for it, working with counties to plan for that, eventually that land coming into a city.
And so as government, we do what we can to forecast into the future where we think the private sector is going to push growth or build, but it's not an exact science. And so this opportunity is to relook at where growth is actually happening, where the private sector is pushing towards development, and then set the rules accordingly through the government. So know that this is your opportunity for flexibility to review those items and make decisions accordingly.
So I had received some comment from a member of the public and their comment was essentially that Tom Waters' UGA is in essentially wetlands and it's currently completely undevelopable. And in their mind, that was favorable and that was the way the UGA should be used so that you couldn't develop and it would prevent sprawl. That's completely false on the intentions of UGAs, correct?
That can be their perspective.
But the intention of UGA is to accommodate further growth in a way that can be managed and planned for.
Yep, and service.
So if a, if a city's UGA is in wetlands or places that are undevelopable, it is our responsibility to take a look at that and reevaluate and ensure that we're meeting the intention of the laws, which in a situation like this, we weren't.
That is your decision as the board.
Okay. Can I go back to Jackson real quick? I don't want to, we're trying to be orderly, but I, what, so given what you described, the specific project is at Jackson, what is the nature of the opposition? I mean, for example, here's the property from Space. And right now, it's basically a lot for Kamatsu to keep heavy equipment. So it's not undeveloped already.
Right.
I mean, it's like, this is a, if anybody would like.
And I wanted to say that, like, the Futurewise letter I referenced, referenced a whole bunch of rezones and said they're contrary to growth management, but this one was not included, so.
Yeah, so I would say that regardless of what Jackson, the current applicant, would like to do with that property, the question is really whether more land outside of the Grand Mound UGA should be set aside for or rezoned to accommodate industrial development. Because even though Jackson might have a plan for it today, the future owner of that land might want to do something completely different in the rural resource industrial zone. So the question is really, does the board, you know, does the board want to consider or have a planning commission review? Actually, sorry, they already reviewed this one. But does the board want to further consider rezoning land outside of Grand Mound UGA for more industrial?
And right now, he's zoned for?
Rural Resource Residential One to Five. And it's actually two lots. There's the southern lot and then there's the lot to the north.
And this property prior to Kamatsu using it was where they built log homes off-site. And so they kind of already?
Well, I thought it was the one further east of that.
I mean, when I'm, I'm looking at the.
I could take a look.
Look at this. Yeah, I mean, to me, that looks like it match. Maybe not.
No, I think it's the one that's further east. Because it's a house and a large shop.
Can we pull it up through GIS? Is that a?
Just take a second.
There's I five.
That way we can.
See it together?
See it together.
It's not, it's not where the truck car wash is. And it's not where the old veal farm was.
I'm gonna pull it up. So it does have some, some industrial zoning directly to the west and that land is within the UGA.
But what, the particular zoning they have now is permissive of what the activity is happening now?
The activity that's there, because there is no commercial business operating there today. I mean, on that site. So he might, the applicant might store some vehicles there, but the business itself is, you know, happening offsite. He doesn't have employees or anything going to that site. But once it's rezoned to rural resource industrial, any use allowed in that zone could come in, you know, for permits.
So nothing's there now.
Yeah, it doesn't look at all like that.
You've got on this sheet.
It's right off I five. That, where the veal, where they had the veal cows. All little babies in pens. You don't, nobody remembers that? It's like.
So those are the three for Jackson?
Current businesses to the left of that, to the west of that, underneath that?
No, I'm not sure if it's showing.
Because you've got light purple and dark purple on this.
The shop.
Yeah, the light purple is the truck car wash.
Yeah.
Does the light purple represent?
It's a plant industrial development.
So that's an industrial zone inside Grand Mound. And what they're requesting is rural resource industrial, which is an industrial zoning district outside of UGAs.
So is the purple UGA?
Purple's UGA.
And so it's just right outside the UGA?
Yeah.
They're not asking for a rezone, they're just, excuse me, they're not asking for an expansion of the UGA, they're just, they're asking for a rezone for these three properties.
So this kind of, this proposal highlights a question that I have that connects to the Futurewise letter, which we can, which is this, this argument that, well, this is urban, you know, they say that putting a warehouse or some industrial use somewhere is urban, you know, is urban development because it paves, it paves. Or, I mean, it's not urban like people are walking through apartments and shops and stuff. I mean, it depends on what you mean by urban. Their definition in their letter is urban means it's impermeable surfaces, it's paved over, it's not a natural environment anymore, it's developed for whatever. And it's inappropriate to just put those types of developments outside the UGAs. So in this case, we're being asked to permit industrial development outside the UGA. And, you know, so I'm just wondering, is that, I know there's criteria in the Growth Management Act that say under, you know, if you can meet A, B, C, D, or E, you can, you can do it, but they're somewhat restrictive. And this one, I mean, does this one have an argument under one of those subsections of the law that say that this would not be violative of Growth Management Act to just change a zone, to allow an industrial use outside the UGA? And what is that argument? That's what I kind of need to see on a lot of these.
And if it gets docketed and remains on the work plan, this is one that has been through Planning Commission and would be coming before the board for that type of conversation with environmental review included.
And it's not, and it's not easy. That's why this is a difficult conversation, because there are caveats, there are nuances, and that's the analysis that falls on the board.
I need to know that there's some argument out. I mean, I'm not gonna, I mean, you can, you can sit there and say that there's a public process and we'll figure it out later, but it's like, if a lawyer can't tell me what the argument would be, you know, then there's no point in putting staff resources towards something that's just illegal. Like, that's a waste of time. So somebody has to tell me, what's the argument where, I mean, I don't see any big problem with, with this specifically, but, but if it doesn't, if it's gonna get challenged to the Growth Hearings Board or whatever and get overturned, then why would we bother?
Let's, Commissioner for you?
I want something that really grinds my gears. I love that I got to use that term for the first time just now, is all over the county, I see people doing this anyways, where it's not allowed, it's not zoned, you know, there's a frickin', like, like a wrecking yard lot put in the middle of a neighborhood, nobody asks why or how or to get permission, they just do it and nothing's done about it. But then, like this to me, it seems reasonable. I mean, it's right next to other like uses, it's almost within the UGA, it's, I mean, to me, it's not asking much and you've gotta allow change, you've gotta, you know, manage development. And this to me is, is not a far-out proposal. And it grinds my gears when we have people that are trying to do things right and we are telling them no, but then we've got people that don't even care what we have to say that are doing it anyways and we don't enforce or stop them.
Thank you for that perspective. Back to Commissioner Minster's question to the staff, have we been told by legal counsel that what Jackson is proposing is legally not allowable?
Nope.
No, we have not.
Has it been asked?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it, this one has gone through quite a bit of public process.
And part of that public process is engaging with our prosecuting attorney's office to make sure that what we're bringing to you is able to be considered.
And I would just, because it, because it bears on like five or six other objections we got, I would like to hear, like, and this would be a great example, like, what would, if the lawyer was in court, what would be the argument or the subsection, why they would say that this is not violative of Growth Management Act?
Okay.
Just so I have that sense of, you know, where's that line? Because I'm a little murky on it right now.
Can I ask that question?
Yeah. We went through this really difficult process to get these projects in Grand Mound and expand the UGA and using the criteria and, you know, and then it's like, oh, well, then let's just make this industrial and just make that industrial. Like, I mean, if we have that latitude, great, but if we don't, it's good for us to know.
Helpful. We'll ask that question of our legal counsel. Was there another question?
No.
Okay, moving on.
We've covered it very well.
Moving on to Beaver Creek, land use and rezone amendment. This is a pretty high staff resource need and a high public interest. We did, we have started one.
Hold on a second, I'm sorry. Should we close on that?
Yes. Sorry, thank you.
We have had one open house on this, this was pretty well attended as well. We received around one hundred and thirty-eight responses to our comments. Most were against the proposal with a small percent either neutral and/or supporting it. And we did receive quite a few comments from nonprofit and government agencies also kind of touching on either side, either in support or against the proposal.
Highlighting that big binder of past comments, quite a few of those were for Beaver Creek and this is one of those applications where we heard from the, heard from the community that they really wanted to make sure that we brought those past comments forward. And I would say that they track very closely to the comments that you see for this docking cycle.
Where are we at in this project?
We've only had one open house, but we haven't started the Planning Commission process yet.
So just an open house is basically all that's happened?
They have, the applicant has modified their proposal in an attempt to address concerns that they heard in the open house, setting aside, I don't remember the exact acreage, maybe you know, Andrew, land for conservation, because that is also property that has a number of environmentally sensitive areas on it.
Fifty percent.
These are the Beaver Creek comments.
Moving on to.
Eighty-three percent of them negative.
Yeah, I would just be curious what my seatmates think on this one. I mean, I typically, if a lot of work had been done, I would, that would mean a lot. I would typically, something that was on the docket before, I would typically want to see it through. But there doesn't seem to be any public support for this. I mean, like, zero. I didn't, I mean, I, reading the comments, and then we also had weigh-in from the Fish and Wildlife and Chehalis Tribe, and, I mean, it just, I'm just, this is a big project and I'm wondering if it's, if it's worth having it on the docket, if there's just, there just doesn't seem to be any support from any quarter, unlike many of the other projects.
Commissioner Edwards?
Commissioner Edwards, go ahead.
Commissioner Edwards, see her.
Yeah, okay, here we go. You got me?
Yep, we hear you.
On the Beaver Creek rezone?
Yep.
Well, here's the downside maybe of not doing it. So what, do we wanna, it's already one in five, I think. So we can have a whole bunch of homes on five acres out there? Or we could have something else that has, that is better for the total environmental project. So that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. It's, it can go either way. What's best in the long run? That's kind of what I'm looking for.
Even if it's only one to five, I mean, fifty percent of it is environmentally sensitive, not gonna get houses there, right?
They are looking to conserve, at least their latest drawing is looking to conserve land that does go beyond, let's say, the minimum buffers that would be required. Until there's a development proposal, though, it's really hard to say how much of the land would, would not be developable.
And, I mean, as planning moves ahead, taking into consideration that memo from the Attorney General's office in September of 2018, having to do with takings and staying away from takings without compensation, I think there's, there's issues there. And I think we ought to be going along with the recommendations from the Attorney General. How that fits, that, that brings us right back into legal counsel ought to be participating with us on a lot of this.
Do you want to remind the board that we'll be having legal counsel provide? So as the interim county manager relayed, Commissioner Edwards, your legal counsel will be providing you input on that legal perspective that you've just provided.
Okay. To me, this one is raw peril, right? It's, it's very contentious. You know, the lycometer at the beginning says, you know, eighty-three percent of respondents are not in favor of this. We've got comments from Fish and Wildlife, we've got comments from the Confederate Tribes of the Chehalis. And, you know, to me, this, there, there's potentially a huge uphill battle doing something, but I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a legal battle doing nothing, is that, but that's what I'm hearing from Commissioner Edwards, that potentially doing nothing presents a legal battle as well.
Commissioner Edwards and I have sparred on this question in the past. I absolutely disagree with him that us not making a land use zoning change is taking someone's property. Like, I don't think that's the law.
You bought it as this.
Right.
And if we change it, that's.
Yeah. I, he and I disagree on that and we got into it with the lawyer as well and we can, we can revisit that, but I disagree with him on that point.
I, I would point out that that is in the area where the port of Tacoma, I think it was, got, and the landowner there ended up getting sixteen million dollars out of the county, or the taxpayers or the insurance company that the county does business with. And so if you look at that memo from the Attorney General's office, which I've never seen before until just recently, which came out in September of 2018, and it is not a legal opinion, it is a memo to try and keep people out of legal situations. And boy, I, I think it fits in there that we could be in another legal situation. Whether or not the public agrees with it or endorses it, that doesn't- that doesn't seem to have much merit when it comes to the courts, so. We, we could be right and have to pay, I don't know, it's all depending on, on how the courts interpret it. And that thing is really worth reading, that memo, and I'm surprised that our staff or us were never, as commissioners, were never advised of its existence until just recently.
I, we.
I was given twenty nineteen, so I, it's something I read in twenty, I think Mr. Pettit gave it to me in twenty nineteen, so I,
There you go.
He's here, that's why I referenced it.
We, setting up on the calendar when Travis will be here to discuss that with you.
So we do a time, time check, we have, uh, a few more items to go before we, as intended, go back to the beginning and do a quick check in. Anything else move forward?
We've got Upcastle and, yeah, we got a few more to go.
So, Upcastle land use rezone and code change. Uh, we received around a hundred and thirty-six responses, mostly against, uh, with some just, uh, neutral comments. Uh, this would be a pretty high staff resource need as well as high public interest. We have completed the planning commission process, which they recommended no change to the zoning, as well as issued a determination of significance, uh, DS. So that's where it is in the process, and it was placed on the preliminary docket about two years ago from being on the official docket, so. Moved off of the official.
It's on the preliminary?
It was previously, it was an official docket item, then the board, based on the, uh, determination and the planning commission, uh, amount of comments they received, shifted it to the preliminary docket.
What did you say about determination of significance?
Yeah, an environmental review was completed.
So it, it, it would require an environmental impact statement?
To move forward, which has not been done, though. And just again, there were quite a few comments from multiple nonprofit and government agencies, uh, mostly against the project. Moving on to the Black Lake Quarry land use amendment, rezoning code change, uh, this would be a pretty high staff resource need and high public interest, about ninety-six comments were received. Uh, mostly against with some in support and some others that are neutral. We did receive three comments from the other nonprofit or government agency, uh, recommending that they, uh, not move forward.
And this is one that's been on the preliminary docket, is that correct?
It was received in an off year and the docket wasn't opened, and so it automatically shifted to the preliminary docket.
And this one's taking a mining site and speaking in industrial, is that correct?
Yeah, it, it's another real, ah, resort proposal, rezone proposal to rural resource industrial.
From his zone, current zoning, but there's a permit to, to mine the?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the Port of Tacoma land use amendment rezon and code change. This would be a pretty high staff resource need and high public interest. We had around a hundred and five comments, and most of them were against the proposal and others were more just neutral. Uh, this is related to, uh, is similar to a proposal that was received in twenty twenty that the board considered and decided not to add to the docket and just removed it from further consideration. Uh, we did receive quite a few comments from nonprofit and government agencies, uh, expressing their opinions on the project. Um, moving on to the Scott land use and rezon amendment, this is a, uh, smaller scale project, and it would have a low staff resource need and a low public interest. Around twenty comments were received and, uh, most of them were against the project. And again, the, we had nonprofit and government organizations commenting against the project.
Can you say a little more about this one? This was a preliminary docket item last year?
Uh, let me just pull it up here. This is a, around a fifty-four acre site proposing to rezone from rural residential, uh, one to twenty to rural residential resource RRR one to five, so it is, uh, increasing the density, uh, residential density. It was placed on the preliminary docket in twenty twenty-two and has been there since.
And we're allowed to do that because one to five is still considered rural density, is that, that's the way it's thought about, or?
In terms of just the rezone to the RRR?
Yeah.
You would review it?
No growth management considerations, cause we're not going to an urban density.
That's true, we, we would still have to take a look at, um, the bill of plans inventory for residential as part of the process. But yes, RRR one five is considered a rural residential zone, not an urban.
And then moving on to the final project, and that is the Martin Way land use and rezon amendment. Uh, it is anticipated as a low staff resource need and low public interest. We had around seventeen comments received, and they were generally across the board with, uh, more being towards negative, um, on the project.
So this one is new, this docket cycle?
This would be in the Lacey Urban Growth Area.
I mean, it's a currently a split zoned parcel, so I'd be taking a look at, um, trying to address that split zoning and have it assisted zone.
So this is the one that actually started in the Development Services Group. The owner of the land, one parcel, at some point, for some reason, it's got two zoning, uh, designations on one parcel. Makes it pretty confusing, uh, that, um, property owner has gone through the voluntary compliance, uh, process to do what they want on that property, but to do the next thing that they want, uh, would require having a single zone, to meet the zone of the property that's closest to Martin Way, needs to have an update of the further part of the parcel to that same zone. So it's, it's clearing up some really old confusion that we have for that property owner.
So it currently has two zoning designations?
Two zones on one parcel.
Does he get to pick which one he wants?
No, that's exactly the problem, is he gets to pick what he wants at the front, but he can't do that same thing at the back of his property, even as the, even though it's the same parcel. And we don't know why it was done that way, you know, history on it, we do know that it's very confusing, it was confusing for staff as well. We worked, I think, collaboratively with the property owner to try and find a path forward. So they have essentially a quick fix right now that they're able to do what they want. This would be the more lasting fix to clear up that confusion. And we guided them to this application process, Development Services did.
And I saw one Lacey council member weigh in, but has Lacey in any other way, can turn you to comment?
No, and, um, an applicant representative did participate as part of the Lacey joint plan process, at least in the public hearings, and so Lacey staff were, were in attendance, and at that time, they didn't, they didn't raise any concerns.
What was the resource on this again? Staff resource?
It's, it's low, really low, I mean, there, there's still a standard process, but we don't see a lot of, um, public interest.
Commissioner Edwards?
Okay, Commissioner Edwards, go ahead.
I guess I'd just like to point out for those listening and, and others in attendance that do what they want does not, does not mean do whatever they want. It means do what they want within the guidelines as laid out.
That, that's correct, thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Edwards.
Okay, thanks.
There are no further questions, we were hoping that we could go through again the list and just get a general, uh, feeling of the room to see, like, if a project should be added to the official docket, placed on, uh, the preliminary docket or on hold or removed from further consideration, to align with our meeting this coming Wednesday to kind of think about the order.
So we are gonna do this in an interactive way? Yeah, so Anna's got little, there are magnets, so as the board provides direction, we'll be able to put them in the right slot. Um, and then we can sort of gauge the staff resource allocation, and what's up here, um, is essentially a two-year allocation, that star marks how much staff we currently have. So when we get past that star, um, that's when prioritization becomes really important, and where we're gonna find those additional resources.
So what's the first order of action?
So we're gonna start with the development code, let's start with the easiest first, uh, we're gonna start with the shoreline master program, final action. And we got a thumbs up, thumbs up?
Commissioner Edwards, I'm gonna need your, somehow to see your thumb.
Yeah, okay, well, here's, I think, what I'm gonna do on this. I think that you can put me down for thumbs up on all of them. And, uh, then when we run into things like, well, how are we gonna do it all? That's where we need to think about doing some contracting, maybe adding a couple staff, I see that Josh put in, there are a couple more folks. Uh, I think it's all part of economic development, comes right down to it. And you build your, your base and take care of it, then you develop that economic impact and benefit to the community, so for now, I'm gonna put my thumbs up on all of them.
I'm gonna assume your thumb is up and you pipe up if that, if you feel differently on any particular item.
There you go, let's do that.
All right, so, UGA code update?
Sheriff Edwards. No shooting in the county.
Okay, go.
We got one, Olympia UGA code update?
Perfect, four thumbs up.
Five?
Tom, oh, yeah, five. Uh, the Tumwater UGA code update? The Lacey UGA code update? Great, just thumbs up all the way. Um, the Forestland conversion code update?
Yeah, and the high staff resources on this one, that's mostly consultants, just so you're where we wanted to reflect, just the amount of work being done on them.
Okay, we're moving on to the transfer of development rights and purchase of development rights. Got one, two, three. Okay, the, the review of the SEPA comment period timeline. Two thumbs up, hold, three.
Say that, follow the water?
Yep, so we had, uh, three, uh, four, add to the docket and one on hold. Okay, the permit review process annual update.
Is that placeholder?
Okay, we got five thumbs up. Moving on to the less restrictive alternative community housing code update. Okay, we got four thumbs up and one on hold. Now, the new uses and related standards annual update?
I'm sorry, new uses, okay.
We got five thumbs up. The code clarification and corrections annual update? We got five thumbs up. The natural landmark program.
Can I ask, with the natural landmark program, that was one where it was on hold and then the board moved it, this has been since I've been on the board. Put it on hold one year, then we moved it forward because it received a lot of community support, and I'm wondering has something changed, what?
So you did have a, the board did have a briefing, this, maybe remind the board the conversation. Commissioner Edwards, you were part of this conversation as well, uh, in that the legal counsel guided why create a program that can essentially accomplish similar goals in other ways. Uh, and that was the conversation that the Board of County Commissioners had. And that was, I think, also a statement from Commissioner Edwards at that time, was an engagement with the applicant on trying to understand more clearly why the county needed to create an entire program for their single use when there was another path to achieve what that property owner wanted to do and protecting the trees on their property. So that was where we left it, and, uh, it was unclear what to do next at that point, except for to bring it back for this conversation, and whether or not staff should continue to work on this program as a docket item.
It goes beyond a code update, it would really be the establishment of a new program that would have to be administered by the county, um, to ensure that whatever, whatever this piece of property is, is, um, conserved in perpetuity.
Commissioner Edwards, are you recalling this conversation?
I am, and I'm, that's a thumbs down for me, I mean, I, I said thumbs up on everything until we get to a few of them, there's probably three or four like this that are down.
Yeah, my thumbs, my thumbs down is not because I don't appreciate the intent or the, you know, the, you know, I guess the intent, but we have programs to do this already, so we don't need, and I don't think, I don't know that we need to reinvent the wheel.
So can we do another count? One thumbs?
Two down, two up and one hold, so we're, we're stalemated on this.
And we've got three hold.
Three hold and two down.
Okay. Two down, two hold.
No hold, please.
Three hold.
Three hold.
So it sounds like it's on the preliminary docket, it stays on the preliminary docket as a hold, as a hold, which means, cause for me, I, I'd like to find some, I, I wasn't convinced after our last work session that there was a good way, productive way forward, but I wasn't convinced there wasn't, so I, that's why I'm just, and that hasn't been resolved for me, so that's why I'm sticking with hold at this point.
And that allows a place marker for the applicant to come in and have further conversations with the commissioners, to provide more information. Uh, so we'll stay on the preliminary docket as voted by the board.
Moving on, the cannabis-related code amendments.
I do have a question on that.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Is there any reason that couldn't be included in those other technical amendments? Cause isn't that what it's, most of it, most of it is about?
I think, um, some of it does, um, Commissioner Edwards, like changing definitions, um, but other things like substantive changes to setbacks for outdoor operations, um, would probably, and having it seen as more of an agricultural product, um, goes beyond just code corrections, and there was, you, you could probably tell me what the public process looked like, but I know there was a lot of public process when this section of code was initially adopted, and we would wanna make sure that we're engaging stakeholders, um, in any, uh,
You were the only one that was here, Commissioner Edwards, you gotta tell us how.
Okay, well, because of, uh, the newness of it, back in those yesteryears, I do think that we need to continue on with, uh, a proper review and recognize that it is becoming a business. I'm not in favor of it myself, but I, the public has spoken, so I work for the public and, and, uh, they've made it clear that they want some common sense thrown into the rules and regulations, so that's why I think we ought to move it forward.
Can we have five, five O on that one?
Now moving on to the no shooting zone?
Oh, wait, no, never mind. I thought that this one should go forward since it's been on hold for such a long time, so.
It's wrong place.
I, I'm gonna be there with me on this one, can you figure that out?
It looks like two holds, two downs and one up, so if Commissioner, it sounds like it at least belongs on the preliminary docket, cause the three of us would at least want it there. I mean, you're, you don't have a second vote for moving it forward, but preliminary versus remove?
Yeah, I don't feel strongly about it, just from listening to what was said earlier, I was thinking maybe, it sounds like it's been on hold for a while, so.
If I, there's three votes to put in hold. And again, same with the last one, the preliminary docket allows space for a conversation to continue, uh, and maybe engagement with your public safety officials, the sheriff, folks in emergency management. Again, it's not a land use issue, but if the board would like to have further engage, keeping it on the preliminary docket allows for that conversation to continue. So that's what we have, preliminary on shooting zones?
Let's move on to fireworks.
Same situation?
Down, land use, three holds, one down.
Commissioner Edwards, do we have a input on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not interested moving forward on it.
So that's a down?
Yeah, yep.
Three votes for preliminary, two to remove.
Great, through development code, and we're at about four staff being allocated, understanding that.
Five point seven specifically.
There you go, sorry.
So which ones are on hold, it's the?
The natural landmarks, shooting and fireworks.
Okay, are we ready to start the comprehensive plan? Docket?
Quick question for next session, when we do prioritization, do we merge these all together, cause it's the same staff? We don't like have a priority for development code and priority for? You do. You do.
And so you establish a priority for both dockets and then it kind of goes down from there. Obviously, keeping in mind that some may be correlated or related to each other, so the ag and the TBLP.
And we'll take into account the staff time and...
What we'll do next on Wednesday is actually have another visualization so you can actually clearly see the order as they relate so that...
Will that include that little meter that says how far along on that project we are?
They can.
We can.
Yeah, it's good to do.
And what's the purpose of separating the priorities since it's the same staff resources involved?
It's two distinct dockets, so we just have to have them separate. But then obviously keeping in mind that they're related.
But if we wanted all the compliance stuff was more important to us than any of the development code, we can't, we can't show that.
You could tell me that and we can work on the work plan to achieve that goal. But this is the formal way to make sure that we've got that alignment.
I just, I'm not saying that that's wrong, that, I'm just theoretically.
And this, will we do the yodel game again as well?
Yep, it'll be a different look to it.
The Price is Right?
Yeah, yeah, where the little guy climbs up the mountain?
It's our first time doing this.
Okay, let's start with the capital improvement program. This is just an annual update that we do every year.
Commissioner Edwards, are we still in the thumbs up for everything on comp plan as well unless we hear you?
Yeah, I think that's the best way to do it.
Moving on to the ag policy and program review. Five thumbs up. Okay, the Nisqually subarea plan.
We should do this blind.
Are you going to put up that new list?
Oh, yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, the Thurston 2045 periodic update. Five thumbs up. Clearing off your schedule.
Okay, we're going to have a big yodel up the chart here.
Yep, so that number also reflects both our time as well as the consultant's time. So it'll move up about six for us.
Okay, the Tenino UGA analysis.
Can I ask a question on that? So you said this could be rolled up with Thurston 2045?
I think there are different pathways depending on what scope is selected by the board. And so that would be a follow-up conversation with what, what does the board want to achieve with this project?
But in honor of Commissioner Fournier who suggested this topic, we wanted to make sure it was called out to have that conversation.
I'm voting with Commissioner Fournier.
Just help me remember. It's the comp plan that has to be adopted altogether, all at once at the end of the year, whereas the development code can be adopted as one of us.
Yes.
I just want to point out, this seems to be a low hanging fruit and I'm hoping that we can do this with Tenino this year, Rainier the next year, Uco to the next year. So these all need to be considered and there's a bigger hope in this process.
So the thumbs?
Well, I, I mean, I saw in the, in the binder that it said low staff.
Depending on scope, I mean, if it's analysis, UGA, I mean, we can, we can do that with minimal staffing. If it's an actual like UGA expansion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's like, I mean, you can call this low and that's fine, but if, if a goal is not just to know that it's wrong, but it's to fix it, right? So the goal is really, it's, that doesn't have any meaning unless we actually do the work to fix or, or change whatever the analysis shows.
And that's what scope means is do, are we trying to now analyze the problem or fix a problem that we at this point don't know what it is?
We can't fix it unless we analyze it and there's multiple fixes, right? We could analyze it and then somebody could come in and apply for a swap based on our analysis.
So if the scope is to determine what the problem is and options for changing, that's different. That's a scope that would be low. If the option is determine what needs to change and change, that scope is high.
Well, I'm, I'm supportive staff resource, like I'd want to, if, if staff resources allow it, then I'd say thumb up. If staff resources don't, I'd say hold it until we can, that's where I'm at.
The parking lot? We could put it in the parking lot and see where...
Let's, let's try one more time with Commissioner Fournier. So the intent is to analyze what the problem may be and provide options of opportunity, but potentially not fix whatever those problems are.
The fix is a low hanging fruit as well and maybe we, you know, we cross that bridge when we get there. But my, my, my hope is that we can take a, a look at this issue and if there's a problem, we put that out to the world.
Two thumbs up and three hold. We'll leave it in the preliminary and circle back at the end. The BLQ and Will Mosky rezon the Grand Mountain West.
Three thumbs up?
Four, five thumbs up. Okay, the Jackson Grand Mountain East land use and rezon amendment on hold.
So I can support this if contingent on legal, what legal tells us at the next briefing here. If it seems like it's a defensible path forward, then I'd be okay with it. So I'm kind of iffy on that yet.
So let's do the thumbs again, just so we know. On hold, up, up and up and...
A weighted up.
Conditional up with legal review, legal input. And the question was not violative of GMA. Is it not violative of GMA?
Basically, yeah, like kind of the, the stuff that's percolating through the future wise objections and, yeah.
Got it.
The Duskins Grand Mountain East UGA expansion.
Put it on the line.
Grand UGA expansion land use amendment rezon on hold. Down, on hold.
So two on holds, two down and one up, Commissioner Edwards.
Yep, I think that's right.
Okay. Puts it on the line.
Puts it on hold, yes.
Okay, hold on, where'd the line thing come from? That's new.
That puts it on hold.
We didn't do that for the other things that got a split vote.
So that's a good point. No, this one didn't get a split. Hold on a second.
What were the thumbs?
It was two removed, two hold, one add.
So that, that's three to leave it on, but in the whole...
We had another one like that where Commissioner Claus was...
One second, the one on the line is pending information. That's why that's on the line.
But all of them are pending information, right? They all get further processed with more review.
I thought the Jackson, there were three thumbs up.
There were three thumbs up. You could put Jackson on add.
On add and then...
Josh was just adding nuances, just to flag that.
What if Josh had added a nuance?
Just flagging that there was that extra question.
Dixon, Duskin is on hold. Now moving on to the Bar Holdings, UGA land ju, uh, UGA swap, land use amendment and rezon. On hold, so we have four thumbs up and one on hold. Okay, the Beaver Creek land use and rezon amendment.
So Commissioner Edwards, we have four thumbs down on that?
Yep, five thumbs up.
The Upcastle land use amendment rezoning code change. Down, 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 four down, one up.
Yep.
The Black Lake Quarry land use amendment rezoning code change.
One up, two up. Three up, one on hold and Commissioner Edwards up as well?
Yes.
Four up, one on hold.
The Port of Tacoma land use amendment rezon and code change.
We have four down in the room, Commissioner Edwards?
One up.
The Scott land use and rezon amendment?
One on hold, two on hold, three on hold, one down?
One up.
One up, so that's on the preliminary?
Okay, and then finally, Martin Way land use and rezon amendment.
One up, one on hold, one up, two up?
So we got four up, one on hold. That concludes the comprehensive plan and general direction.
We're way under our star.
No, no.
We can put a lot more stars.
We're going to work on the stars.
Oh, look at that, right on the dot.
So what we will do is take what we've heard today, try to answer some of the questions by our next meeting and come back on Wednesday with another activity, but this one to prioritize the docket, the comprehensive plan as well.
Is that Wednesday morning?
So it's one where, one year where we did the priority, like basically we were giving the sheet and we all kind of did our own, in our own time as we were reviewing. Is that going to be the case? I kind of liked that because it let me kind of have a thought process through it and kind of go through it on my own time and then turn it into staff. And they kind of just calculated all of our priorities and...
We did, I think it was similar to this, but it had a column for your rank.
Yeah.
Yeah, give us like half an hour to like talk to each other about why. Okay, I think, I'm going to put this at the top because I'm more than one person now.
In the meeting?
Oh, in the meeting or outside?
In the meeting, in the meeting.
In the meeting, like let us say, you know, say, hey, this is why I think these could be the top couple three for me and I want to hear everybody else's. And then just let us fill out our sheets, give them to staff and then they'll come up with the composite rank. Does that work?
That's great.
That what you were saying?
Yeah, I just...
And staff could provide that sheet to you today.
Because it was really labor, we, we did it that way a couple, three years and then we did it a different way and it was way more cumbersome.
Yeah, having, having you guys come with it would be helpful. That's good.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Well, good time.
So this has been amazing. Thank you all commissioners for your attention in completing four minutes early on the docket.
Just to repeat, Commissioner, that only happened because this was well done and I had time to work through it and I was ready for, you know, I kind of knew what my key questions were, so.
I think the other big factor is Commissioner Edwards wasn't here.
Hey, I don't know if that's fair.
So when I say we got the train back on the track, this is that example. So thank you all, staff and Board of County Commissioners and community for your input and time.
Yeah, can I just say for everyone who submitted public comment on this, thank you so much for taking the time. And again, thank you to staff for kind of providing that way to, you know, the survey monkey. I think it, it worked, so, free job, all right. Oh, are we there?
Yeah, we're there.
I don't know.
Back at two, I believe.